Ready? Called me in order?
Okay, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners' meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired live on our local cable television station, QAC-TV seven. These media broadcasts provide citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in Commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at qac.org/live or on our public access governmental television channel provided by Breeze Line Cable Services. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to qac.org-publiccomment. And citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@qac.org. All comments received will be summarized during the press and public comment period on this evening's agenda. We acknowledge everyone's participation and by attending you acknowledge that the session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. If you do care to speak, please sign up at the information table in the lobby. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing for the Commissioners' review. We will now stand and be led into Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner President Chris Corcarino.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioners, that brings us to the approval of today's agenda. So our agenda for today's meeting, April the eighth, along with the regular session minutes, the Roads Board minutes, the Sanitary Commission minutes, the closed session minutes from March twenty-fifth, and the Budget Work Session minutes from March twenty-seventh and April first have all been circulated for review. Any additions or corrections?
Yes, like to amend the agenda to add two additional Action Desk items.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Also would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended and accept all minutes as submitted.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Nobody signed up.
There's nobody signed up. I think we have Jay online, but he knows your speech, so we can save you the speech.
Dispense that.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jay. I don't know if he...
You're on, Jay.
Oh, there he is.
There we go. Commissioners, we have all of that Queen Anne's County Association. And I had to call you from the roads tonight because I couldn't make it down there in time. But I first appreciate the fact that we've got electronic communications that citizens can participate in press and public comment remotely. I mainly just wanted to express a note of thanks to all of you. As you all know by now, Senate Bill 931 completed the Senate yesterday. It's not the outcome that we hoped for. There were a couple concessions made that brings back some local zoning authority. But the overriding issue was the cap that was put into place at five percent. This represents a big change from, to a degree two, over the fall and summer and really jeopardized Queen Anne's County's place as the largest agro-using, agrarian county in state of Maryland. And on this Biden scale, nobody knows what the safety impact is going to be, how it's going to affect the land, how it'll affect the soil, and how it'll ultimately change the landscape. So there are a bunch of us who are working on some things for you all to consider at the local level. I look forward to bringing those to you, but I mainly wanted to say thank you for all of your time and effort in bringing the other counties in and opposing Senate Bill 931. We're not for the leadership of Queen Anne's County. I'm not sure all of the other counties would have joined in, so thank you for getting the word out. And yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for all the effort. Unfortunately, we didn't get the outcome that we wanted, but it was a good effort. So thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay. All right, Commissioners, that brings us to presentation. So if you want to turn to tab number six in your books, tab number six, item one, page one, we have Character Counts update and Character Counts Spotlight, and we have Melinda Ray and our Character Counts Coordinator, and I think she has some awards maybe too, grant recipients as well.
I feel like it's been forever since we've seen each other because we got canceled in February and it's been a while. Quick update on Character Counts, it's doing really well. We are getting close to the end of the school year. We have one hundred and ten volunteers. We're in one hundred percent of our K through five classrooms this year. We're at all four middle schools. We're at the Ride River Upper School. We're also just started working with a homeschool co-op on the island beyond Words Tutoring. So we are reaching students all throughout the county, whether they go to our public schools or not. So that's very exciting. Things that we've got coming up, we've got our appreciation event for our volunteers on the twenty-third. We're going to be at the CMS Spring Thing on the twenty-fourth, and we'll be at the Christmas in April in Pinkney Park on the twenty-fifth, and that's just April. So it's just getting started for my busy season. We're also going to be in two summer programs this summer, so we're going to be extending and making it like a year-round initiative, so that's really exciting. Before you guys do our Character Counts Spotlight, I'm also here in my role as the co-chair of the Children's Council to present to you guys the recipients of the Jackie Carter Teen Who Cares Grant. And we awarded two grants this year. It's been a few years since we've were able to award any grants, and so it was really exciting to be able to award two of them this year. One of the recipients was unable to attend Riley Corn from Ken Island High School, but I wanted to tell you a little bit about her project. So the grant is a $500 grant, and it helps these kids get started projects that would benefit the communities of Queen Anne's County. So Riley's project was she wanted to start a pickleball activity at Ken Island High School. And so her grant money was spent on equipment and materials and things to get this started, this pickleball league. And although she couldn't be here tonight, she did give me some updates. They have thirty students right now participating in this pickleball group that she got started. They are from ninth through twelfth grades, so all grades are coming. They meet twice a week, and so far they've only done scrimmages against each other, but it's been a lot of fun and they're getting to know each other. And they actually are looking forward to some tournaments. They're going to be playing against Gunston, Broadneck, and Queen Anne's County High School coming up pretty soon. So she's really excited about that and very grateful to have gotten this grant to get this started at the high school. Our second recipient is here with us tonight, Sam. Sam, come on up. This is Sam Callahan.
Hi, Sam.
And I have a little certificate for Sam.
Nice.
But Sam is going to tell you a little bit about his project, which has to do with canine cancer. Do you want to tell them about your project? I was really excited. The entire group really liked this project.
Pull up a little bit so you're close to the microphone so we can make sure we hear you good.
So for our charity, we're trying our best to make, to get, to raise enough money so that for dogs who have cancer, we can give them to local places such as like vets or other places so that dogs, because I know that's very common for many, for dogs to have cancer. I don't know, my friend's dog had cancer and died, and also my friend Corinne's dog, who is seven years old, had cancer, and she had to pay for the chemotherapy, which got very expensive. So I thought of making a charity to raise enough money for dogs with cancer so that people don't have to worry and so we can pay for the dogs, because dogs are like man's best friends. I feel awful they had to die.
And we loved that idea because it can be very pricey to take care of your feline or canine family member. And then what is your charity going to be called again, Sam?
Let's just speak Canine Charity.
Just be canine, and you guys are going to be selling T-shirts coming up soon to help raise some more money. And what is the event that you're going to be at?
So we're doing two. One of them is a breakfast at the jetty where people can like, you know, bring their dogs. That would be, I thought that would be pretty fun. And the second one...
And Ken Island Days. They'll be selling T-shirt at Ken Island Days.
Now, has the nonprofit been set up yet?
They're in the process of getting the nonprofit set up, but the Children's Council was really excited to give them some startup funds so that they could start raising money towards this really cool cause.
Now, has a date been set for the breakfast at the jetty?
I think your mom mentioned Father's Day as a possible option.
We're going to try for Father's Day.
That's excellent. Once you know that's official, let us know, and we'll talk about the meeting to make sure people come out.
And we're certainly going to promote it on our socials as well.
Yes, there's a beta for T-shirt that we made. This is a painting that we got, and we thought it would be pretty cool if we put it on a T-shirt. Here's the back of our logo.
That's great. It's awesome. Outstanding.
And on the Character Counts side, I know I'm here with Sam as the co-chair of the Children's Council, but on the Character Counts side, we were kind of, I was very, very proud of the two recipients that we chose, the Children's Council chose, because Sam was one of our Character Counts ambassadors last year, and Riley was one of our student coaches last year. So both of them were involved in Character Counts, so I had known them previously. So it was very cool to see kids that helped Character Counts and stood for Character Counts moving on and continuing to do great things even once they're no longer with us, so.
Well, Sam, as things progress, as Commissioner Corcarino said, give us some more information, report back to us, and we can get the message out, and if there's anything we can do to help you out, we'd be glad to.
Okay. Awesome.
Well done, Sam.
Thank you guys so much.
Real quick, real quick. So for all your hard work, I'm going to give you something not everybody gets. This is a Queen Anne's County challenge going for all your efforts for the citizens of Queen Anne's County and our furry friends, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if you get pulled over for speeding...
He doesn't need that yet.
I know.
Not old enough to worry about that yet.
He can use it if he gets pulled over for driving without a license.
Yeah.
We're going to get a driver one of these days.
Yeah, don't you...
Almost forgot about one of, so important.
This is the best part.
Our spotlight, and we've got a good group to spotlight this month for trustworthiness.
Character, Queen Anne's County Commissioners' Character Counts Spotlight of April 2025. The Character Counts pillar, celebrated in April, is trustworthiness. This pillar encompasses honesty, integrity, and accountability. Our spotlight honors this month a trusted daily, our trusted daily with people most precious to us, our children. Being a public school bus driver is often thankless job. These individuals are trusted to show up every day and safely deliver our children to schools. Of course, of any day, a bus driver might be hugged, high-fived, cussed at, flipped the bird, puked on, coughed on, and hit by backpacks, or instruments, or gym bags. But bus drivers must be consistent, be good listeners, show compassion, and know how to tie shoes. They often find ways to turn bad behavior into good behavior and be someone that their riders can look up to. And they must do all this while driving a forty-foot-long, two-ton vehicle. We'd like to thank them for their dedication to our students, and we trust, and we trust they will continue to show up and give us their very best. As always, if you are aware of the business, a nonprofit, or an individual in the county exemplifying one or all the six pillars of character, be sure to nominate them for future spotlights, and that can be done at www.peopleofcharacter.org.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, bus drivers out there.
Thank the bus drivers. I can add that I taught in the county for a lot of years, I was a classroom teacher, and being a bus driver is one of the most amazing things that they do because I don't know that I would have the patience for it. I could take twenty-five kids in my classroom, but oh my goodness, that many on a bus at the same time? Kudos to them.
Yeah, they're great, that's for sure.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right. All right, Commissioners, our next presentation is a proclamation. This is Proclamation 2512, National Public Health Week. We have Mr. Bryce Strang, our health officer. So that's item two on page two, tab six.
I'm back again.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Good evening again. This is the National Public Health Week. The theme this year is "It Starts Here," and by that it means it starts here with the boots on the ground, what we're doing in the communities, interacting with our patients, improving the health and wellness of everybody in Queen Anne's County. And we can't do that without the collaborations with other county entities and the support of each and every one of you. So again, thank you.
Hey, good.
And I have the proclamation here. Proclamation 25-12, whereas the week of April seventh, 2025, is National Public Health Week, and the theme is "It Starts Here," highlighting the importance of making a difference in our home, community, and state. And whereas this year is the thirtieth anniversary of celebrating National Public Health Week, and in the past thirty years, significant strides have been made in public health. And whereas public health organizations use National Public Health Week to educate public policymakers, public health professionals, and the public on issues that are important to improving the health of the people of the United States. And whereas a person's health status can differ drastically by ZIP code due to the difference in the built environment, environmental quality, community context, access to healthy food, access to education, and access to healthcare. And whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats ranging from infectious disease outbreaks to natural disaster preparedness. And whereas public health action, together with scientific and technological advances, has played a major role in reducing and, in some cases, eliminating the spread of infectious disease and in establishing today's disease surveillance and control systems. And whereas efforts to adequately support public health in the prevention of disease and injury can continue to transform a health system focused on treating illness into a health system focused on prevailing, preventing disease and injury and promoting wellness. And now therefore, we, the County Commissioners of Queen Anne's County, do hereby proclaim the week of April seventh through the thirteenth, 2025, as National Public Health Week in Queen Anne's County, and call upon citizens to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to recognize the contribution of public health in, one, improving the health of people of our state, and, two, achieving health equity as the theme states "It Starts Here." Signed here, Queen Anne's County Commissioners.
Thank you.
And that's for you. Your very first one.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Frame it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Bryce. All right, well done. All right, Commissioners, moving right along. Item number three, we have the Department of Emergency Services, their departmental update, so Scott, come on up with your group, please. And we also have a proclamation 2513 as well for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So Scott, come on up, and again, that's in item three, pages three through nineteen, tab six, and we also have it up on the screen as well. All right, Scott.
Come on up. Trying to hide in the back.
Then we have the medical director.
The crew I have here tonight is Dr. Siatola, our medical director. Lori Morris is our Special Operations Chief, and Zach Yurki is our EMS chief. We've prepared two divisional updates for you tonight. The unfortunate thing with everything that's happening with federal grants, we created Lori's presentation last week, and most of the grants she's going to go over have been cut.
You mean the lack thereof?
Lack thereof, government grants.
There's been some changes.
There's been some changes in the last four or five days that we're not particularly happy about, that will have a slight effect on the county, and there's probably a lot more to come. So how much money did Lori lose for us? Well, right now, there's good news.
I won it, and then I lost.
So there's good news and bad news. There is only one project, which is the Cloverfields Project, that we've actually expended funds and have not received reimbursement for. Everything else is pending, and we haven't purchased anything under any of the other grants, so there's no county commitment to it yet. So there's no refund that we're waiting for. But the particular Cloverfields grant, basically what we've been told is all the funds have been discontinued for that grant, and there's no chance of them coming back, but we've been instructed by the state to still submit for reimbursement. And we can't get any like hard answers on where the grant's going. We're on a conference call this Thursday to hopefully get more details on it. But that's about $188,000, I think, full grant commitment, and we've spent probably about $120 to $130 of that.
And some of it was, there was a capital project in DPW's budget, so that will be some of that, too.
But the rest of our presentation is pretty cheery.
All right.
And we're going to move on. So Lori, you're up first.
So here's the slide.
You're like lines that you strike.
We could. So we can talk about them a little bit more in depth than what I thought we were going to have to. As you all know, we've been doing the Cloverfields Greenwich Project. That was sunsetting anyway, so the last meeting for that was today, and we are working on getting reimbursement, which we were doing anyway, to get reimbursement in for that project. That was a scooping grant that was done as a brick. And the brick is the one that has been canceled or, I'm going to say delayed, but a lot of them have been delayed. That was the most recent one that was canceled on the fourth. Our hazard mitigation plan, we are in the middle of writing, and I say in the middle, it is sitting on FEMA's desk waiting to approve the changes we made two weeks ago. So although it has been approved verbally, they're unable to sign it because a lot of the things that are happening at the FEMA level. So that one, we are also still in a holding pattern. The THIRI goes along with the mitigation plan. It is essentially the threat analysis for the county. And then we also have applications that we have submitted. We were doing an acquisition for North County. That one is still good to go so far. And then we were also doing exploration for South County. That one has probably been canceled, but we were just in the exploratory phase on that one. So not the news we wanted, but... So we still push on with all of our planning and exercises.
So the first thing we want to head on real quick is we gave you a copy of our draft strategic plan. It was mainly put into the packet for your review, but Zach is going to hit a couple things in his update that are tied to that strategic plan, so that's why we wanted to give you a draft review of it. We'll be back at a later date sometime after budget is over with to give you a more in-depth overview of it and to get you to approve our strategic plan. So Lori?
So in addition to strategic plan, we've been working with DPW on our debris management plan. That is one that we wrote about five years ago. I tried to get all of our plans on a five-year cycle so that we're not hitting them all at the same time, but that one, we're working with DPW, and it is out for review one last time before we bring it into you. We also serve on the Delmar Evacuation Plan. That is a state-run group, and that is near completion. I think we have our last meeting next week. The radiological planning has to be done for this area. We're working with the Department of Health, and we are in the planning stages with the state on that one, and that is both MDEM and the Department of Health. Next up is going to be our continuity of operations. So for those that are not familiar, think of, we wrote our continuity operations right before COVID last time, and then we had to use it during COVID. So there's a lot of changes that we came up with that we knew we were going to have to in our next update. That's going to be in the next plan that we touch. And then in the budget for '26 is our nuisance flood plan, which will have to be updated as well. And then we have our Maryland Mezzanine System. This is a project that's kind of been going on in the background that we've been working with the state, but I thought it pertinent to give you guys an update since it does, we now have two sites that are open in our state. So this is a statewide weather program in which the state has funded about seventy-three, I believe, weather towers across the state. We currently have two operational in Queen Anne's County, one opened last year in Wy Mills, and then we recently opened one with the Sanitary District in Stevensville. They are looking for a site in North County, and they have a proposed site that they're starting to look at in Southersville. So if you want the information on this, there's a QR code, there's also the website. You can pull up live weather information anytime.
So that's Lori's quick brief, and do you have any questions on Special Operations Grants, Weather? Moving right along, Zach.
Evening. So, wrong way. Just as a reminder, so right now, the EMS division, we have sixty-seven full-time staff members. I've got sixteen members assigned to each shift, four shifts across four days. Currently, we've got two staff members that are still precepting for independent operation. I believe one of them actually is getting ready to turn her book in to get cleared. My one precepting should go from an EMT to a paramedic, BLS to ALS. Actually, just turned in her book on Saturday, so we should be clearing her shortly. I have three folks that are currently EMTs but are in paramedic school or have just received their paramedic certification or in what we call our mentoring process. So they work with a preceptor as their partner, and they start doing some on-the-job training to lessen that time that they have to actually ride as a true preceptee as a third. And then we do have one open position currently that we're working with HR to backfill. So for calendar year 2024, there were 5,193 unique EMS calls that resulted in 3,894 transports. Of those calls, seventy-five percent were handled by DES transport units, and additional twenty percent were handled by the paid crews in Ken Island and Goodwill, and then five percent were handled by our all-volunteer response for our volunteer companies. So looking at our calls by call type, to answer Commissioners Wilkens' question from a couple weeks ago, lift assists are number two for 2024 with 467 total calls. If you look at the rest of the top ten, lift assists are 467, but when you add in our fall types, which are stratified into ALS and BLS, that's over a thousand people that fell in Queen Anne's County in 2024. The next closest one is sick person. Those are stratified ALS, BLS, coming in at just over nine hundred. And then you can see everything rounds out to interfacilities, chest pains... chest pains, hemorrhage laceration, and some mutually medicals in there. Question of where we respond to our calls at for our response station areas, 39% of our responses were on Kent Island, between Kent Island and United Communities Fire Company. Another 20% is breaking up between Graysonville and Queenstown. 21% is in Centerville's first duty area, so when you look at that, there's 80% of our call volume is Centerville South. The remaining 20% is broken up between Churchill, Southersville, Crumpton, and then Queen Anne Hillsborough shows as zero. They're actually 0.5%, but PowerPoint didn't like the decimal point, apparently.
So the next part is something that is pretty much brand-new to DES, and it's kind of a pet project that I've been working on with our CAD vendor. So this is a public-facing website. The website address is up there, QACcitizenconnect.org. Anybody in the public can access this website, and hopefully, if Bruce hooked me up right, the test is on.
Are you going to be able to go to it?
We are going to it live, and we're almost there. So we are in.
Hey, voila.
So once you're into the system, a map appears, and there's dots showing on the map, and that's showing our call volume in those areas. The map is broken out currently by fire district, and it defaults to one month, and it defaults to Queen Anne's County DES. So this is showing our information. This also has all nine volunteer fire companies in it, and I'll show you how to access that in a second. What's kind of neat with the program is you're in map view right now, but we can also switch it to a heat map, and this is showing a heat map over the last 30 days where our call volume has been, which is kind of nice because the heat map kind of gives you more of a hard visual of what's going on. We can change the date range. You can make it any date range that you want, and I'm going to expand this out just so we can show you one other thing here real quick. Give me a second. So when you go down here where incidents are in the bottom left-hand corner, when you click that, that shows, if I get it to do it right, it's a little slow. It shows all the different departments within the county. So it defaults to Queen Anne's County DES, which is the stats are on the current map, but we can switch it to any volunteer company in the county, and you can see their call volume in their area. I wouldn't recommend, like, you can click this all at the same time, but a lot of us run duplicate calls where we have a unit from both departments on it. So sometimes you get false data if you're looking at two departments at the same time. So you really want to look at one department at the same time. The other thing that you can do with this program is you can isolate this to the exact call type, so you can see exactly where we've had interfacility transports, where we've had abdominal pain calls. It isolates all that information, and it'll put a dot on the map on where those occurred.
You can do that right now from that laptop?
Yep.
Why don't you do it for falls, lift assist?
So the, so the only downfall with this.
No pun intended.
It would, it would, no pun intended. It would take us a little bit to do that because you have to unselect all their
Okay.
other call types, and there's a lot of call types in the system. There's a good, I'd say, 50 different call types that you can sort through and pick what you want to see. But there was one thing that I wanted to show you. So we've got a full year showing on the map right now. And as you zoom in on this, because one of the questions that came up when we did our budget presentation is what's the difference between a 55 and over, older community and a non-55 and younger community? And there happens to be one on Kent Island that's side by side. So can you tell which community is the 55 and older and which one is under?
Yep, Ellendale and Bay Cove.
So this is Ellendale, and so we had 50 calls in a year period on the 55 and older side, and we had seven calls on the non-55 and older. So that kind of tells you what different types of.
Who's the one that had 10 calls out there on the water?
So what this does is it's gridded, so it's not throwing a dot on the exact location of the call.
Gotcha.
Because the actual address, the address of the call is confidential information, but the call types that we're going on is public information.
Gotcha.
So you might see 15 calls pop up in the middle of a cornfield. The calls didn't happen in the cornfield, but they have them close to the cornfield. So let's see if I can get you back to Zach's presentation here. But any questions on this map? The other thing that you can do when you zoom in far enough, when the red dots show up, you can hover over it. It tells you what the incident was, and the date that it occurred, and the time that it occurred. So this is live.
When you say the incidents, so, but like, for example, the seven in Ellendale, there's no, like, red dot in there. What's the difference?
You have to zoom in closer.
So if you go closer, then there'll be seven dots.
If you actually click on the number,
Uh-huh.
it'll throw all the calls up at the same time.
And then you can just click on whichever dot.
Yeah, so the one that's showing in that area is a sick person. It happened on September 4th at 17:08 hours.
Phil, that's 5:08 for you.
I think the politically correct term is age-restricted.
Age-restricted.
Active adult. Active adult communities, age-restricted.
And I'm an age-restricted person.
So's Jim.
Membership has its privileges.
It does. It does.
This is just a heat map that Scott was able to pull from the Tyler system we just showed you, and he's overlaid our stations over top of it. You can see the six site locations we currently have that we operate. Five of the six, we have transport units based out of. And this map that follows that gives you an idea of what geographic location those units cover. So Station 100 on Kent Island proper, we have two units running out of there, and they're covering Kent Island proper. The next one is Station 300, which is Queenstown Firehouse, and that covers all of Graysonville, all of Queenstown, a little bit of the northeast portion of Centerville, and picks up the far, excuse me, northwest portion, and then picks up the southwest portion of Queen Anne Hillsborough's first duty area. Station 400 picks up Centerville proper and everything east of 301. Station 500 at Churchill Firehouse picks up all of Churchill, the western portion of Crumpton, and some of the northern portion of the Centerville area. And then Station 600 in Southersville's Firehouse picks up the remainder of Crumpton and all of Southersville. So just to show you that, there is a large geographic area that some of these units are covering. And then when we go to look at our system performance, we judge our performance based off of a 12-minute 75 percentile. So that's 12 minutes from the time that someone calls 911 to the time that we want to have an ambulance on scene. Currently, right now, we are sitting at 13 minutes and 24 seconds. Geography plays part of that. There's also a lot of new staff, both on the comm side of the house and my side of the house. As people get trained, they get more efficient in the system. We expect to see those times come down some. We've also shown the 90th percentile time. Scott alluded to the strategic plan. We're looking at suggesting changing our benchmark to a 90th percentile time of 10 minutes or less. When you look at the industry standard right now, a lot of people are going to an eight-minute or less response time, and in an urban environment, they're actually looking at six minutes or less for a high-performance EMS system. So that's just a benchmark that we want to work towards. Obviously, it's not something that we're going to get overnight, but as.
So the 75th percentile, the 1324,
Mm-hmm.
is that based on one month's time, one year's time?
That is calendar year 2024.
So before we added the last unit, what was our response time?
We were probably in the 15-minute range.
15? And then before we added that unit, when we were back in the old-school days?
Before, before we did that, we probably didn't have the ability to accurately judge the 75 percentile.
But when you and Lori were on the unit, you're, what, driving 30 minutes to a call sometimes?
It has happened.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
But this will also be a topic of conversation when we come back at you with the strategic plan, because again, as Zach highlighted, we would like to see the percentile move to the 90th percentile, because mainly, when we've created the 75, it was predominantly for rural community, and it was created well over 15 years ago. And our community dynamic or demographic has changed, and we're no longer predominantly rural across the county. We've got a strong suburban area on the south end of the county, but a strong rural area in North County, so it might be good to have one percentile for a part of the county, another percentile for
The other, right.
the other part of the county, but that's conversations that we need to have. And this is what we base when we're, when we're coming to you to ask to place another unit in service. These are the times that we're, we're judging that, that timeframe to be to put the unit in service. And we think 75 percentile is a little bit too high of a buffer area for our more suburban areas, if that makes sense.
And the last thing I have is just to show where we took patients in 2024. Anorundal, Queen Anne ER, Easton, and Chestertown are always our top four. Anorundal and Queen Anne ER go back and forth of who gets number one. Last year, it was Anorundal with just over 1,200. Queen Anne ER, we took just over 1,000. Easton, we took close to 800, and Chestertown, we took just over 600, too. One thing that I want to highlight also is Kent General for Dover has started creeping up consistently. They're up to 131 for 2024. A lot of people in the northeast portion of the county are starting to use Dover as their preferred hospital system. We also took 29 people by ground to shock trauma and 24 people by ground to Christiana. And the rest of it, when you look at it, we took people to over 15 different receiving hospitals, which really harps into our motto of we try and find the right hospital for the patient the first time. We don't want to take someone just to the hospital that's open if they're not going to get the appropriate care that they need to manage their emergency.
I would have never guessed that we were taking patients to Christiana.
Yeah, and anything from like 405 corridor north, it's quicker just to go down with a bypass to load them up and go instead of sitting there and consult for aviation week, 20, 30 minutes for them to show up, 10-minute handover, and then flight time. We can be to Christiana in less than an hour.
In summertime traffic, almost anywhere in the point of Queen Anne's County is quicker to get to Christiana than it is shock trauma, unfortunately, by ground at least.
I'm surprised at how few transports to Hopkins and Maryland.
Yeah, the, the, the Maryland ones that you see there for downtown, a lot of those are actually stroke patients. For people that are comprehensive strokes, we took those up there just because they can do interventional strokes more than just the TPA. And Hopkins, it's, it's really a crapshoot right now whether people want to go to Hopkins or they want to go to AI DuPont. You see, they're even on the board.
Was that your last one?
That's my last one.
So any questions on any of the information that we went over?
I noticed you didn't, when you put the location of the units, you didn't put in the, what I call the chase crew, who's stationed at the Kentaneros.
So the Kentaneros is a supervisory unit that's currently stationed there right now, so our, what we call our EMS 4.
Okay.
That's the station they run out of. And then they have a unit on either side of them that's a transport unit. So one's at Queenstown, and then one's on the Mata Peak area on Kent Island.
So they responded, yeah, they responded to the high-acuity calls. There's basically a first responder unit, and then they're backing up the other transport units for those high-acuity calls. That's the second set of ALS hands to manage those critical patients.
Unfortunately, the station.
But they're, they're, they are included in the report we get from you every week when we get down to two units, or they could be possibly one of those two units.
So what happens with those is when we get down to, if we get to that point, what we'll do is we have a South County supervisor and North County, or a Central Supervisor, EMS 3, and then sometimes if we're fully staffed, we have an EMS 5 up north. And what happens there is when we have a ready reserve ambulance, the two of them will marry up with that ambulance and put that unit in service.
Okay.
So it gives us a little bit of built-in surge capacity in that.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Projection for seventh unit?
Pardon me?
Projections for seventh unit?
Projections for a seventh unit, good question. So we've run the numbers on, one, the expense to do a seventh unit. Justification-wise, numbers-wise, again, it depends on what you're going to approve in the strategic plan and how you want our response levels to be and how quick you want us to do the service. So part of that judgment's going to come from you. I think right now, we could justify a seventh unit, but we also have other departmental needs that we prioritized kind of in front of that because we don't have the support staff right now to support everything that we're doing in the field. So our, our budget that we submitted this year was basically building the support staff to help.
Because they're transporting.
Because they're transporting. And, and basically how we're getting all of our support stuff done is he's taken a unit out of service to do the support stuff, and we'd rather not take the unit out of service. We'd rather keep it in service. So that was kind of our focus this year. But during the budget process, most of that was cut during the budget process. I believe all positions in Queen Anne's County were basically cut during the budget process. And the county administrator, on, on our view of the budget, did an extremely fair job across the board of creating a budget, and we're very satisfied with the budget that he presented to you. But I'd say in our very near future, we're going to be coming to you asking for the seventh unit.
And housing is part of that one.
Yeah, we, we currently do not have the equipment to do a seventh unit, so we'd have to buy an additional transport unit to do that, which is very expensive right now. And I wouldn't even want to touch the transport unit purchase with the tariff thing that is going on right now. We don't have housing for a seventh unit, so that's another issue. There's a lot of things that we have to work out before we can really consider doing a seventh unit.
Is that a, what's, what's the, what's the forward time? Is it a year, two years to buy a unit?
So right now, from the time that we order till the time it's delivered, it's taking approximately 24 months. We've got one unit that's on order. I'm projecting it's going to be well over 24 months before we actually see it.
I think it's maybe over 36 months. You'll probably be closer to 48 until that one gets in.
We're expecting two to be delivered this calendar year, but we don't have the exact time when they're going to be delivered. And then we've got another one that was actually ordered before we ordered the two that will probably be delivered behind it. We have not accepted a delivery on a transport unit since 2021, so we're way behind the eight ball, and we've got an aging fleet that we're getting very concerned about.
Yes.
But you've been giving us the, the budgets to purchase the units. We've been ordering the units, and they're just not getting delivered. And it's a national problem. It's just a Queen Anne's County problem.
So what do they do if somebody has, if they have a unit that's in an accident? Do they get to get bumped to the front of the line to get theirs quicker, or they could go, well, that could be really bad for some.
There is no flexibility in the, in the ordering chain right now.
So we're really thankful for the people in-house to take care of the fleet and the people at DPW that take care of the fleet for us as well.
And we've got a good repair crew, and they keep, they keep us on the road. And we take very good care of our units. If you look, our oldest unit that we've got in, in the fleet right now is a 2008. And if you put our 2008 beside one of our newer ones, it's tough to tell that it's that old. They've taken very good care of the units.
Good. Jim?
Ready?
Ready for proclamation? So we're going to disappear. I'm going to call Phil English, the communications chief, up because it's really for his division.
All right.
And there's two dispatchers with us. One is DJ Whippy, which is probably one of our most senior dispatchers that we have on staff. If you ever wonder who you want on duty when the call goes bad, answering the radio on the other side, DJ's name would float to the top almost every time. He's one of our best dispatchers that we have, one of our most seasoned ones. And we're sitting in the hallway reflecting on, there's probably only five or six of us left that actually worked in the basement of DPW and in 911 Center. Was there? DJ was one of them. Along with DJ is Linda, Linda Port, and she is one of our brand-new dispatchers and is kind of under DJ's wing, learning the ropes. And she's been with us for a couple of months now, and very happy with her progress. But they're, the three of them are here to accept your proclamation.
Awesome. There you go.
There you go.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Any words of wisdom, or?
Just want to, I take the opportunity to thank all of you and the citizens of Queen Anne's County for their continued support. We all know how, how critical the 911 specialists are in the chain of events when emergencies take place. And anybody thinks of their first responder, they think of fire trucks, police cars, and ambulances, but nobody thinks of the person that's answering that 911 call. I'm fortunate to work with such a professional group. I personally had the opportunity to experience that last week when one of my dispatchers came in and said, hey, we got your mom on 911. So with their efforts and Zach's team, I just can't thank them enough for what they did. We were able to get there and take care of my father, and he had surgery. We were able to get there and, and take care of my father, and he had surgery yesterday. So, with that, again, they have an extremely critical role. They often get forgotten, and I'm glad that we can take this opportunity to recognize them for all their hard work and everything that they do.
Could you tell for the public that doesn't know, how many shifts, how many people work a shift, and what kind of hours they put in? And, I mean, I think that's kind of, tells a tale of the dedication too.
So, currently we have four shifts. They work a twenty-four hour seventy-two, they work twenty-four seventy-two shifts. There are six nine one one specialists assigned each shift, two supervisors. And then each discipline is broken down. You have a call taker, emergency medical dispatcher, emergency police, and emergency fire. So, when you look at the totality of circumstances, you have about sixty-seven thousand calls that come in a year to our nine one one center. So, all of our staff are trained in each discipline, so they're all, they're all call takers. But we generally have one dedicated call taker. So, that dedicated call taker is basically responsible for a hundred and eighty calls during that shift. So, they're busy. They're very busy, and you take an incident like we had this morning in Graceville, and we have a team that, that becomes totally focused and dedicated to one particular incident. But you have to look at the total picture and see that there are still other incidents happening. You still have nine one one calls coming in. You still have police that are out there doing their job. You still have, you know, other medical situations. So, all of our team is working on that fire call, but the whole world doesn't stop because of the fire calls.
Right.
It gets very busy. And, you know, again, I can't thank the group that I work with enough. I mean, I'm very proud to be a part of this organization and working with, with them.
Okay, well, I've got proclamation twenty-five dash thirteen. Whereas a nine one one service is a lifeline that people depend on in emergencies, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the first contact with those who use a nine one one emergency number. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of field responders, including police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and mental health crisis counselors is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Whereas public safety telecommunications are responsible for engaging with, with callers who are often under duress and in danger in order to obtain necessary information and determine the severity of the emergency, and are also responsible for dispatching field response personnel and managing the ongoing incident. And whereas public safety telecommunications are critical to the safety of field responders, and whereas public safety telecommunications technology specialists and support staff have the greatest concern for the well-being of all and for the safety of field responders. And whereas each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. And now therefore, we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, do hereby proclaim the week of April thirteenth to the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, to be recognized as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in Queen Anne's County. Signed, the Queen Anne's County Commissioners.
DJ and Linda, do you want to, do you want to say anything? Tell us about your job or? DJ, why are you so good at it? There you go.
Training, training, training. Constant, it's, it's an everyday thing, you know, you don't stop. You're always learning, you're always training.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Are you taking that? Okay. All right, Commissioners, next item is the, the annual FY twenty-six tax offset hearing. And this is in conjunction with ordinance thirteen twenty-eight in the tax property article of the code of Maryland. We do provide a tax offset for our partners and colleagues in the municipal corporations. We've reviewed these, embedded these with, with them at the COG meeting. Commissioner Jack Wilson is serving as president of the COG meeting now. We have representatives from each town here, I think most every town, to come up before you and make a few comments about the, this year's tax offset. So, you want to run through, you want to go alphabetically or?
Barclay?
Barclay, Town of Barclay, come on up, all right.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
County Administrator, Assistant. I'd like to introduce Commissioner Robin McKenny. She said this is her first time here, so.
All right.
Be gentle, be gentle.
Welcome, Commissioner.
Hopefully, it's just as exciting as you thought it would be.
Actually, it's very interesting. So, we are open to, we have a couple of projects we're working on. One is, we just received word that we are part of the state's budget to give us a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which we hope to put toward a town hall meeting place, which we are in very great need of. And then we also have a paving project. I can't remember the last time the streets have been.
We have four towns, street, street towns, street and town and streets.
And they all need repair, so we've got that in our budget. But basically, we would appreciate anything that the county can throw our way.
All right, does anybody have any questions for anybody in Barclay?
No.
The sewer project is complete, but that's maintained and managed and financially taken care of by Southersville. We actually even get a bill that we pay them, so, but we're glad it's in. It's got things moved a little bit. We've got some, some interests, some pieces that are for sale, so.
That's good, that's going to help, yes, okay.
There was a horrible accident this morning, two tractor trailers right there at the blinking light.
By the railroad track? By the railroad track?
Yep, two tractor trailers. Because three thirteen north and south just has a yellow light, blinking yellow light. East to west on three oh two has a red light.
And stop sign.
And stop sign, but sometimes they go too fast through the intersection, and I think that's what happened this morning, so.
I will mention too, from our COG meeting, we, the, the bill in Annapolis did go through to allow the municipalities to lower the speed limit below twenty-five on state highways in concurrence without a traffic study. So, you, you can perhaps reach out to your, to the state highway district engineer and, and request, you know, an evaluation for that in the future.
That might help.
Yeah.
That's good.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments for us?
Did we get those beavers?
I think they're working.
They are working on it, from what I understand.
Beaver problem up there. Dizzy is a beaver, right?
What it is right now is that the water's backing up from where the railroad tracks are at. So, anything on the southern end of the railroad tracks is inundated with water. Everything else is flowing smoothly, so if we can get the railroad to, or somebody to get in there and clean out the, the debris, then maybe things would be kept going. I've got photos from two of the property owners, and they have never seen the water at this level.
I think our roads division's been helping out.
Yes, they have.
Trying to get some folks to help get those cleaned out.
There's a ditch that runs all the way around.
Shoo them away, yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Centerville.
Good evening.
Did I wake up Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah.
I've never sat here before. I've never sat here before.
Jeff Keel, town council.
Carolyn Brinkley, town manager.
Just want to say, we, our DPW is fully staffed now, our police department is fully staffed. So, we're not asking for anything, same, same amount, so we appreciate it. The citizens appreciate it. So, that's all I, that's all I have.
Have you got any questions for our friends in Centerville?
If you can give us some money for our wastewater treatment plant, we appreciate it. Like eighteen million, we'd appreciate it.
Just, that's it?
Just eighteen?
Eighteen million, eighteen million. Jim will strike you a check.
We appreciate it.
Did the property by Millstream go through across the creek?
We are still working on the deed between the town and state highway. So, that's been going on since September.
Oh, for the trail connection, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Bulldoze that house, that business that was there? For us from Hilltop?
Oh, Hill, oh, the, the old mill?
That's its own story.
Or is it?
That's evolving, right? That's the, that was the Friday.
Is that a historic site?
Yes, it is. It's, for three years it's been evolving.
Yeah.
Hopefully soon it'll come to an end.
That wall is, it bulges a little more every day too, but it's, just wants to reach out and grab it now.
We got some new information, so.
You dig it, yes.
When I drive by, I just sort of go off a little bit to the side on there just to do really fast.
Avoid it a little bit because it's straight through.
Or not so fast.
Well, if you want a new car, don't drive fast. If you want a new, just drive really fast.
Have you, in all honesty with that, have you guys got any pressure from SHA being that that is a state highway there to do something to eradicate it or whatever?
Talking about, no, we have not.
Okay, I'm just curious, it kind of hangs into the state road.
We're talking with them about it.
Okay.
Because it's going to fall on their road.
That's, that's my whole point.
If it falls, it's going to fall on their.
It'll be their cleanup, not yours. Okay.
Some council people have been talking to some state highway people about it, so we'll see where that goes.
Got you. Good luck with it.
Yeah. I don't have any contacts at state highway anymore. They're all gone, all retired. So, that's all.
All right.
It was good, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Churchill. Welcome, welcome.
How you guys doing?
Hey, Chief, how are you?
Good, good, sir. I'm Charlie Rhodes, the president of the town commission in Churchill. And to my left is Mr. John P. Griffin, Jr., and to my right is Ms. Maggie Corsi. They're both new commissioners. We're a body of three, and they're new since last year. So, this is their first.
Very good.
Tax differential hearing, and it is my thirtieth. And I, I must say, it's changed quite beneficially over the years. So, we really appreciate all the efforts by the county.
How many, how many years have you come up here for these?
Thirty. It's my thirtieth year as a town commissioner. And it's a volunteer position, but it's where I grew up and it's where John Paul grew up. And Maggie's been a long-term resident. She has a business in town, and everybody is, as volunteers.
You want to give that bills, business a selfish plug?
I can, I mean, I have a daycare business. It's a childcare center there, it's Busy Bees Daycare. One of, I've been doing it for twenty-four years now.
Very good, very good. And what, what made you decide you wanted to run for office?
I love Churchill. I, I mean, I grew up in Queen Anne's County, and then when I got married, we moved to Churchill. My husband was from Churchill. And I just, I care about the town, you know?
Good for you.
So, like I said, we operate, and I'm sure most of you gentlemen are recognized, we only have one full-time employee. But we do most of our work through contractors and volunteers. And we've been very fortunate with the work done by volunteers as well as their contractors and their partnership with the county, county departments. And I want to basically do a shout out to the public works department, who's always been available for advice and assistance if we've needed them. And they've done some work for us as well, and which we, they basically served as a contractor, do work for us as well. And we really appreciate it. Also, we've had some pretty intense informative discussions as it relates to stormwater management with the county guys, and they've been very helpful. And park, we've got a wonderful park, which was a, a cooperative effort between the town and the county. Once I was there, when it was purchased and developed, and that was really a, a great cooperative effort from the town and the county. And really want to put a, do a shout out to Queen Anne's County Sheriff and, and his department. They've done an excellent job on helping maintain the, the speeds and the traffic in the town of Churchill, which has been a big issue for us over the years. The amount that was shared with us, that was proposed at the COG meeting that we, we may receive in the, the rebate, if you will, for the tax set off. Just so you know, it represents approximately twelve percent of our general fund budget. We're not a big operation, but we can get things done. We really appreciate it. And it's, it goes a long ways and it really helps us. Our big projects right now, with our own funding, as well as some of the balance of the art funding, we're upgrading our sewer, sewer treatment plant. We're not expanding it, but we're upgrading the, the operation as far as water quality and stuff like that. So, that's basically all we have. And if you have any questions or comments, we're here. We appreciate the opportunity to be here too. And we appreciate what you guys do, because I know it's not easy.
I don't have any questions. You guys are great stewards.
Yeah. I forget it all at the COG meeting, so you guys.
Patrick?
Friday night I was up at the turf field.
Oh, yeah, it's nice.
It was, there are lots of kids. They were, they were playing baseball, soccer, and lacrosse on the one, on the one field. So, it's fabulous.
And it's obviously, like I say, it's a joint partnership with the town and county, because that's in-town limits.
Yeah.
And we provide sewer to, to the park.
Yeah.
It's that busy most nights.
Is it most nights like that?
Oh, it's fabulous.
And along those lines, it's very important for the law enforcement guys to maintain that traffic at a safe speed there because like you said, and if you're traveling through Churchill, please be careful because we got kids with skateboards and bicycles, they're everywhere. And as, as the weather's gotten better, you'll see more and more of them. And it's good to see, actually.
Yeah, it's good small town stuff, right?
Yeah, so, again.
And where's that speed camera again?
The speed camera is right at the intersection of Cemetery Lane and Main Street, right there by the bus stops. And it, it shoots both ways. And just incidentally, and you know, it, it's been active for three months. And as, so far, on average, we're, it's about two hundred citations a month.
Is it really?
Yeah.
And I'm proud to announce I'm not one of them. And I go through there a lot.
However, we have noticed that traffic's, it, it's doing its job, it's sort of slow.
Chair, do you have some data, how many of those that you're catching? Are repeats? Yeah, repeats, locals, or are people just going through?
Well, we, we have a lot, if you know Churchill, but we, I have to check the most recent count. But there was a count that showed us about fifty-three hundred cars a day going through Churchill. And they're going from two thirteen to three oh one, the majority of them, because it's the shortest route.
Yeah.
And so, we're getting these cars, and it's fifty-three hundred a day from, you know, twenty-four hour period. But most of it is from six A to seven P. And, and that's both directions. So, it's the shortest route they go through. But as far as repeat offenders, that we, we.
So, you're conditioning them to watch their speed?
Yes.
It's working.
What, what's interesting, when they get, once, as people have found where the traffic camera's located, once they get by it.
Then they hit the gas.
It'll accelerate, the sheriff's office is normally working the street where that, and it's really slow traffic. And, and Maryland State Police helps as well.
Yep, I've seen Maryland State troopers up there.
Oh, yeah.
Your old building.
Because it's a state highway.
Yep.
Yeah, there's always a deputy. And we're, we're tickled.
What's interesting about that number of fifty-three hundred, I did a count back there, got it from SHA a while back, I think around twenty-two. There's eighteen thousand a day that travel that two thirteen corridor back and forth. So, you figure a third of them are cutting through Churchill, so it's, that's a lot of cars going through there. It is.
And their town hall's located right there at Walnut Street, Main Street, which is nineteen where it turns. And, and you see them all the time. I mean, it's just constantly moving through there. But it appears that the majority of now are going at a much slower rate, which we appreciate.
We're staying on two thirteen.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly.
All right. Thank you, perfect, thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Millington.
Good to see you, all right, take care.
Nobody in Millington? Do we have Southersville? Would you can do that for them, Jim?
What's that?
Southersville. Templeville. Queen Anne.
I'm surprised they're not here.
Queenstown, come on up.
We ran around the list just to be.
We save the best for last.
Thank you.
Well, the first thing I'd like to say is, um, I want to thank you all for your donation to Reeds Across America. Um, I wear two hats, and then I guess it's, they're both my act of love. But I started going to the veteran cemetery in Hurlock about 10 years ago. And at that time, we had, um, a wreath for every five graves. And if you were buried within the last five years, no wreaths went to that section. So, I mean, it gets very hard when you decide who gets this wreath. And you're looking at people who are there with flyers, because their families are departed, and you have to tell them there's no chance that this new part of the cemetery will be acknowledged. So, um, with a lot of help and a lot of support from a lot of people, um, we've, volunteers have raised the money from the public and private sector, and we now put a wreath on every veteran's grave at the cemetery. And about, uh, 500 additional interments take place every year. So we don't really have a status quo, because we're always, there's always new people. And there's always new deaths, and there's always, um, cremations that are acknowledged there. So you have been very generous in this project. It's not my tax-county offset speech, but I wanted to thank you for that, because I can't thank you enough.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah.
My other job, and it's my other volunteer job, is, um, the finance chair for the town of Queenstown. Um, Queenstown is all volunteers. We only have three paid employees. The rest of the work that we do is, um, done by people that give their time, uh, their talent and their energy to get things done. So, um, we've had a very cooperative relationship with the county. Uh, you've understood what our issues are and our needs are, and so we're thankful for, um, the tax offset. Of course, we always see things that we would like, that you would probably like to give us, but we have to share the pie. So I won't be selfish. I could be. So thank you all very much for that. Um, I would like to ask, in the past, you have supported the fireworks, um, that are done at the Fireman's Fair in September. Um, we do the fireworks at the end of the year, because there's so many fireworks on Memorial Day, Fourth of July, at the Narrows, that, you know, you could have to wear your earmuffs. So these are always been done, um, after Labor Day, sort of to close out the summer season. So if you see any room in your budget to support the fireworks at Queenstown, I would greatly appreciate it.
What was last year's? Do you remember?
Last year, I think you gave us $10,000. And I think we, I think we put in an additional three on top of yours.
So why don't we, Jim, because we know we got other ones to do, why don't we wrap that up, like on our last budget night or whatever? To do that, because that way we can get them all in at once.
Okay. Have you put us in? That's all I have to say.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
Yes, please. We have a schedule there for all the towns, uh, so we would like a motion to consider approving those.
I move to set the differential rates and aid payment amounts for and to the municipalities for fiscal year 2026 as shown in the attached schedule. Second.
Got a motion second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
When do we do the fireworks?
Couldn't get that Jeff Keel thing in?
We're gonna do that at the last budget, uh, meeting.
Here's a caveat for yours. We'll get with you later.
All right, commissioners, that is all of the presentations for this evening, so we can get, go into legislation.
Okay.
So if you want to flip to tab number seven. Tab seven, item A, pages one through 22. This is county ordinance, uh, 24-15 for ethics. This one has a bit of history. This county ordinance was introduced, uh, September of last year, September 10th. Public hearing was held in October, and, uh, discussions were then subsequently held to consider revising the ordinance, amending the ordinance to reduce the, uh, number of boards and commissions that were subject to the completion of the annual financial disclosure forms. So we produced an amendment to the ordinance. That was presented to the Ethics Commission, and they approved it. So basically, this amendment, um, reduces the number and the boards and commissions that must fill out the annual final, financial disclosure forms to only the boards and commissions that have decision-making authority. So it's quite a reduction, and, um, I think it's appropriate to, to consider that amendment. So that amendment can be introduced and adopted, and then the original ordinances, um, can be adopted as well tonight, either in its original state or as amended.
So I'll introduce, uh, amendment, uh, one to county ordinance 2415. And then I will make a motion to adopt amendment one to county ordinance 2415.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry. Sorry, Chris jumped the gun on.
Someone might have had an objection to that.
Um, all right, and then I will further, uh, make a motion to adopt county ordinance 2415 as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Five zero, that carries.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Okay, our next, uh, ordinance is county ordinance 25-01 Cannabis Regulation. And this is, uh, ordinance 2501 that would, um, align our cannabis zoning regulations in line with the, um, the state alcohol, beverage, and cannabis article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. And we did increase the, uh, some of the, um, components to include, um, for licensed growers, processors, and dispensaries, uh, for odor control and such. This was conveyed to the Planning Commission, and they reviewed it and have sent it back to the county commissioners for consideration. This, this ordinance was introduced, uh, in January, and, um, the Planning Commission did not offer any adjustments or amendments, so this one also can be scheduled, uh, can be now scheduled for a public hearing.
I move to schedule a public hearing for text amendment, uh, 2501.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Comment?
I'm gonna say no.
No?
I'm gonna be a noer.
All right.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. Excuse me. Uh, item number C in your books on pages 60 through 63. This is county ordinance 25-02 for animal control. And, uh, we held this public hearing, um, March 25th. We've received no comments. So this one is ready for, um, consideration and adoption. And this basically provides for, um, a reconsideration and a judicial review by the Board, uh, Animal Control Commission, for cases involving, um, uh, dog bites, animal.
Motion to adopt county ordinance 2502. Second.
All right, got a motion of second. Any discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five zero.
Thank you, commissioners. And our last legislative item is item D on pages 64 through 67, county ordinance 25-06. This is, uh, for the use of plastic bags. Essentially, this is a plastic bag ban that was modeled after the one that was, um, adopted in the town of Centerville.
Oh, introduce it.
This could be introduced, yeah.
All right, it's been introduced.
Uh, and you want us to schedule a hearing for that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay. Commissioners, that concludes the legislative portion of the agenda for this evening, unless anybody had anything else. All right, uh, next we have, uh, the Department of Public Works. So we're two items for Public Works. Um, you want us to flip, uh, flip to tab number two for, uh, Public Works? They have two items. Item number one on pages one through two, this is, um, uh, letter of support for the, uh, spay, neuter, and vaccination grant, letter of support for the Animal Services Division.
Take a motion?
I move to execute the letter of support to the Maryland Department of Agriculture for spray, neuter, and vaccination grant funds for FY '26.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
Motion to convene a sanitary.
Second.
Stay just for that.
All in favor?
No.
We're sanitary.
Sanitary.
You said aye.
Oh, I did say aye.
Because you can oppose that, Jim.
Yeah.
You want to oppose that, Jim, or?
He's serving as the sanitary commission. This is item two on page three. Round two, this is, uh, Chesapeake Bay Education Center Seaweed Extension Bid Number Two. Uh, this, this was a project that was bid and rejected because of the cost. Had one bid. We received, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, five bids, ranging from 378,817 to over 500,000. And, uh, Martins Excavating, Excavating of Centerville, Maryland submitted the low bid, and I think we would recommend award of that contract.
Did that work for us before?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
They did all the work at the 4H.
Okay.
Um, park.
I move to award the bid for the Chesapeake Bay Education Center Sewer Extension to Martins Excavating in the amount of 378,817 dollars, and also authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the agreement once any necessary summinals are in place.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Alan.
Yeah. Thanks, Alan.
You don't need to come at it.
No.
Action items?
All right, commissioners, we have a few action items, uh, remaining. Uh, flip back to tab number three. Um, item one, tab three, item one, pages one through three. This is the semi-annual property tax payment service fee. Uh, the county tax collector is authorized to pay, uh, bill for a service fee for the lost interest when we provide for two payments of the property tax bill each year, and that has to be reported to the state. And again, this year, we are recommending that a service fee not be charged for the 2025, 2026 tax year.
I move to submit to the Department of Assessments and Taxations an approval form for the establishment of the county and municipal services fees for semi-annual property tax payments, a service charging the amount of 0%.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Uh, item two on pages four through nine, this is another mutual aid agreement for the Commandant Naval District Washington in Queen Anne's County. Did I say that right? Commandant Naval District Washington. Yeah, this is, um, another, uh, medical services mutual aid agreement with Commandant, uh, Naval District Washington.
Commandant.
Command, oh, excuse me, Commandant, thank you, Commissioner. I think this is a new one, um, so. Yeah.
I move to authorize Director of Department of Emergency Services to execute the mutual aid agreement between Commandant of the Naval District Washington and Queen Anne's County.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Questions? Where is the Commandant Naval District Washington? So.
Naval Academy?
It's wide range. This specific one is with the Naval Academy.
Yeah.
And Naval Academy has a fire department there, and we use them quite a bit for mutual aid response when the interrundles not available. Gotcha. And this is basically a renewal. We currently have a mutual aid agreement. This is a five-year renewal with them.
Are most of those, uh, mutual aid, most of those are accidents on the bridge?
So most of the, the calls that they're responding to us are for fire incidents, not so much motor vehicle accidents, uh, like the explosion that we had at Ken Island a few months ago. They were part of the response for that. Uh, they have a ladder truck, which is very popular, and a lot of times, Intermodal County's not available, so we utilize their service for that. Uh, the big thing that they help us with every year, uh, is with the Bay Bridge Run, and they supply a lot of equipment to us for the Bay Bridge Run. And then we, in turn, supply transport unit services back to them for graduation day on, on the naval side. Wow, very good. Nice partnership. That's really cool. All right, uh, we got a motion and a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's what I figured.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Army Navy tickets. Right, just ride inside the unit, and then you get out on the inside. It's not hard.
Catch a ride, and once you're in, then get out.
All right, moving right along, commissioner, we have a couple more items here. Item number three on pages 10 and 11 is budget amendment CC 10. This is prior year fund balance and bonds, and this budget amendment adjusts the budgeted bond allocations for the 2016, 2019, 2020, 2021 bonds. Uh, this basically adjusts the funding sources for a variety of projects to be commensurate with the timing of those projects and the requirements of the, the spending of those bond funds.
Make a motion to approve CC dash 10.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Uh, we have outside agency budget allocations. Let's skip that and do our desk items. We have two desk items, both letters of support, one for Comcast, one for Verizon, to pursue their respective grant applications via the, uh, State Department of, uh, Broadband for the, uh, BEAD program, which is, uh, providing broadband services to underserved and unserved areas within the county.
I move that we execute both letters. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go.
See how it's going? You see that?
I gotta take, I'm taking notes.
All right, and then lastly, we have the outside agency budget allocation worksheet is in your book. Uh, you may have an electronic copy of that as well. We have the, uh, Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Jeffrey Rank. Bruce Grove is going to help us here with some equipment, so we can run through these. If you've got your selections made or your homework is done.
We're not, we're not, uh, we're, we're, we're gonna go through these and play some chips on where they fall?
We, we, we are prepared to do so if you're so inclined, if you like.
I'm ready.
Are you ready, Phil?
I did my homework.
You ready, Jack? I already got mine electronically done.
Which one you want to go first?
I'll go first. Um, it's okay.
So for the community mediation upper shore?
Question. Question, question.
Give me a nod when you're ready.
Yep.
10,000.
Where is that?
It's a fifth one down on the front page.
There you go.
Uh, then I have the E. Beauty Community Cancer Support for 5,000. Um, that's a, have you guys had an opportunity to
Yeah, that's a great place.
to see that location? It's amazing. What they do is they build wigs, put wigs together for women who.
What was the name of, Phil, what was the name of it?
Yeah, I'm not seeing yours, Phil.
You're not?
Line 18 on yours, Jack.
Where you get numbered lines?
He's got digital.
Dude, my 18 is given the Edge Foundation.
Well, you must have a different.
E. Beauty Communities, Community for Cancer Support is out of Phil?
That's right.
Yeah.
And you gave how much?
Um, 5,000.
Okay.
Anyway, they do, they make wigs and counseling for
I've met him.
girls that have lost their hair due to cancer. Um, it was ministries, 10,000. Um, Historic Ken Island, Save the Graves. 5,000. Queen Anne's County Chamber of Commerce. I thought they were, they're not a line on them yet, huh?
So, we're going to discuss that.
Okay.
But.
Keep going?
Go ahead and put your money on it for now.
Uh, Queen Anne's County Chamber of Commerce, 5,000.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Got it?
Where is it?
Queen Anne's County Council for Children and Youth, which is right underneath it, 1,000. Okay. Uh, Queen Anne's County Watermen's Association.
Yes.
10,000. Universal Lusacic. 5,000. And Y River Upper School, 15,000.
Total of?
You want, I, nobody said I'd add it up.
He's got it right there, Jim.
He's got it. 66,000.
I will defer any dollars that are needed to any of my fellow commissioners.
We've got 21,000 left, though.
Yep.
And you can also, before we finish the budget, you can add something to it.
Yeah, you don't have to exhaust your allotment. We always have folks come in throughout the year as well, so, um.
Yep. If that's a, that's a, an earmarked pocket of money, that I'll, I'll defer the rest of it to their.
So before we go on to the next person, just a couple of things. I know Jack and I both want to talk about this. There's a couple of ones that we have on outside agency grants that we do every year, and we're going to do every year, that I think should just be moved into line items, so we'll put the money into it. into line items. So, we'll put the money into it here and then we'll extract it out to a line item and I, and I'm going forward. My thoughts would be the Chamber every year. We're doing that.
M A S S B.
M A S S B, uh, the Council for Children and Make a Difference Day.
Right.
Those last ones are very small ones, but we do it every year. We're not going to not do it. So I just think.
Because they're all, they're all programs.
Okay. To a couple of these, moving from the outside agency grant into just a line item for themselves.
Correct.
Chamber, Council for Children, Make a Difference Day, and.
The M A S S B for the, it's the M A S, it's the Family Preservation Fund. We've been doing it ever since we started these.
So these are on top of the other ones we've already pulled?
No, I actually had it.
Yes.
On my mind of funding it totally anyway, so.
No, I'm just saying, that's.
Mine's just gonna come up less.
Is that just? Okay.
We're gonna fund them right now, but then we'll pull them out and so next year they'll be their own separate line item.
Right. Okay. So the Chamber, Council for Children and Youth, and M A S S B.
And, and Make a Difference Day.
Make a Difference Day, right?
Because I don't think there's ever a year where we just, we don't do that, so. And if we're going to not do it, we just not do it as a line item, but I think that makes it a little bit easier.
It does.
So you wanna, so next year we'd have that page set in here?
Yep.
That we could, we could look at and just say, yeah, okay, or, or no.
Right. Like we do for, um.
Chester Y and the other ones.
Chester Y or, or Ken Harris Development Fund. We, we pulled it out a while ago because we're always doing it.
Yeah. That was good. Yeah.
And then I think we'll have some other changes to how we do the outside agency grants next year. I think one of the things next year we need to do is put a cap on what they, what can request because what's been requested has grown substantially and some of these are, some of them are huge, which they're never gonna get funded.
But we have a request here for five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars and that's.
Which is more than.
We, we're gonna have to cut them off with that and I guess that's a good discussion we have again when we finish the budget up and say, hey, this is the cap for any one
Yeah, so you sort of manage expectations.
And I would also, something else to think about, I'm not saying we have to do it, but it's like three years in a row, take a break. Um, let everybody, uh, be a part of it because.
Right. And i- and if the ones that we're always gonna continually fund, we'll treat them.
Right.
Differently.
Right.
And every now and then, there will be an organization that needs a larger grant that we can always make a grant on. But I think might help with some of these to, because that number, if you look at what was requested this year versus just three years ago.
Yeah.
Right? We've gone from five hundred thousand to one point seven million in requests, so it's.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't you just say five hundred?
One request was five hundred.
One, so we have one that was over five and, and so we would never have nearly that much to give. Even everybody gave it. So it makes sense just to put, I think, some caps in it so when people are applying, we're setting their expectations.
Yeah.
Going into it.
Do you have any value in mind as far as a cap upper limit?
Let's just, let's just think about that.
Okay.
Let's not decide. All right, let's get through this.
Well, last year we got a hundred.
Well, yeah, but now we've got these line items, so we've taken the line items out and that's fine. So that this way.
Which is Chamber of Commerce.
You ready, Jim?
Yeah.
Ready? All right, so I've got, uh, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, three thousand. Um. Churchill Cemetery, three thousand. Churchill Fire Company, fifteen thousand. Compass Regional, three thousand. Daycare Inc., five thousand. E-Beauty, uh, Cancer Support, fifteen hundred. Just let me know if any of these take them over where they're at and I'll move them. I like to spread the wealth. Um, Giving the Edge, five thousand. Um, Historic Paths From the Past, Historic Ken Island, five thousand. Queen Anne's Coral, one thousand. Queen Anne's County Arts Council, thirty-five hundred. Queen Anne's County Council Children and Youth, fifty, just make the full two thousand for that one. The Council for Youth.
Mr. Dumel already did.
He did.
Put a thousand in, so I'll put a thousand for you.
He did a thousand? Yeah, just a thousand to make it whatever they asked for to two thousand, yeah. Um. The Preservation Fund is ten thousand. That'll be aligned with him, so. Um, Watermen's Association, five thousand. The Railroad Society, thirty-five hundred. Slow down.
You can see where he is up there.
Yeah, Community Club Floor Replacement, sixty-five hundred. Bruce Burke, um, their roof replacement, sixty-five hundred. Tides of Grace, five thousand. Upper Queen Anne's Youth Association, thirty-five hundred. That should be it.
All right, you got fourteen hundred left.
All right. Put that to tail, I guess. All right.
So. Those that are, are in red here, we're not even considering them.
They're recommended by the outside agency and reviewed them today.
They're not in. They're, they didn't, they.
That's what I'm saying, we're not, so these are.
I didn't do any of the reds or the yellows because there's a conflict. The yellow proposes.
You did, you did actually do one yellow.
I did do a yellow?
Yep.
Oh, that's the M A S S B, though.
So, and at the very end of this list, the ones that withdrew them, so I mean, they're on the list, but I.
You did Tides of Grace.
I think they should be.
They're yellow.
Not on the list.
Oh, okay.
The ones that withdrew should not be on the list?
Yeah, all the, all the non-eligibles should be pulled off the list. All the red ones should be pulled off the list. If they have, you know, a legitimate reason why we're not giving them money.
Yeah, I, I think you're, you're right about that. The red ones should just be pulled off because.
I disagree. I want to give something to the Lighthouse Academy based upon our meeting with them.
Yeah, you can. They're not red, right?
Yeah, they are.
They can't be used for religious purposes.
I don't know why.
I don't.
Which one?
I'm just saying.
Yeah, where is it? Lighthouse Christian Academy, public funding conflicts with church, church state separation.
I think that might be not accurate. I don't think it's a non-secular purpose. I think it's, it's an education purpose for that one, so I.
You could say that about any.
Yeah, I think that. The yellows are questionable, apparently, Jim.
Who's next? You're gonna be next.
Who's next? Go ahead.
They're questionable, apparently.
Yeah.
Jeff, you ready?
Yes.
I'm not. I wasn't prepared to do this right now.
You're not ready?
Well. The Sit STEM Academy.
If you're not, if you're not ready, you don't have to do them. You can submit.
No, it's all good. The Sit STEM Academy, that is, um, does anyone know anything about that, STEM? I like that. I like STEM Academy. So, two thousand for them. Giving the Edge, uh, two thousand. Um. Lighthouse Academy, twenty thousand. Queen Anne's Classical Charter School, twenty thousand. Uh, Queen Anne's County Drug Free Coalition, fifteen thousand? What do I got there?
Twenty-eight thousand, four hundred left.
Did anyone give anything to the Watermen's, uh?
Two dollars.
Okay. And we, anyone give Tides of Grace? You did?
The five thousand has been given. They asked for.
Okay, I'll give them another two thousand, Tides of Grace. And I'll, I want to split the two, what I have remaining between, um, the Drug Free Coalition and the Classical Charter School. So, you said I had twenty-eight thousand left. I just took off two, so that's twenty-six, so thirteen each. If I got that right.
And, uh, Drug Free Coalition and the other was, um.
The, uh, Classical Charter School?
Yes, sir.
Got them?
Yes.
You didn't want to go with them?
No, I'm not gonna go.
All right. I'll do, uh, three thousand for the STEM. Uh, fifteen thousand on the Historic Ken Island Paths From the Past.
He said fifteen thousand?
Yep.
Okay.
Five for Save the Graves. What do we need for, uh, Chamber? What's left on that one?
Chamber could use another ten.
All right, so do ten. About, uh, Make a Difference Day?
That one's still worth it.
All right, thirty-five hundred.
All right, do thirty-five hundred. Do, uh, thirty-five hundred for the, uh, Moore, the biking, mountain biking one.
Atlantic Offroad Enthusiast?
Yeah.
Try those fifteen hundred?
Uh, no, twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Q E C at Home, three thousand. Uh, five thousand for the Classic Charter. Five thousand for the Waterman. Five thousand for, uh, Tides of Grace. Eight for the Churchill Fire Department. And five thousand at Compass Regional? All right, where's that leave me at?
We've got seventeen thousand, four hundred remaining.
All right, I'll hold there. Jim, you're gonna submit?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so Jeff, if you don't mind, if you can get rid of the red ones off the list and the last that, that, uh, withdrew and then just forward me the update, email me the updated list. I'll.
Okay.
I'll fill in the blanks and have it, either send it back to you or wait till the next meeting, whatever you want to do.
Sure.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Very good. We also send it to everybody in case somebody, you got, you still got money left, right, Phil?
Yeah, but Todd made a very good point. He, three, four months from now, there could be.
Well, you know, we got the four H kids coming in.
A desperate request. We have the four H kids that are gonna, I mean, there's a lot of places that if we put that in earmark for stuff that pops up that is good stuff, we could, we have those funds there.
I look the other way. I go, spend it on this and you'll still have money when things pop up. Isn't that right?
Yeah, like George.
Say?
How about me?
The board can make decisions like that. Yes, they can.
That's right.
That's right. But we'll, uh, we'll incorporate Commissioner Moran's, uh, selections and recirculate the list to everybody and if you want to make any final, you know, adjustments, that's fine.
Okay.
All right.
Yep.
You got everything?
Yeah.
You got it all? All right, very good.
For having to wing it. Good job, Jeff. Bruce?
Yeah.
Wherever you are. Thanks for helping him. All right.
All right, Commissioners, that concludes the agenda items we had, so we can move on to press a public comment.
Anybody in the audience want to speak? Anybody online?
Nobody, okay.
The same people we always have here pressing public comment.
They're always here. They're always here.
Hey, Beth?
Just our groupies out there.
Our groupie.
Our groupie.
It's not plural.
The audience does not know that.
By the way, good luck on your campaign.
It's done.
October?
Yeah. And so round two.
All right. Round two, dummies. Patrick?
Tab four. Talbot County actually debated and voted on supporting the, the Youth Mental and Behavioral Health Stabilization Center, which I, I find fascinating. Uh, but it, it passed. I don't know if it passed unanimously, but they sent us a, a letter of support to Congressman Harris, so that's very exciting. The Boat Show is first time at Kent Narrows, starts Friday, Saturday and Sunday, so folks get out and support and tickets are available for it. And traffic's gonna be a little bit challenging, so you might want to park at Jamal's abandoned uh, outlets and, uh, enjoy yourself, visit the restaurants. I just want to say, this group of Commissioners are the most environmentally safe, are trying to do more for the environment than any set of Commissioners in the state of, of Maryland. On May seventh, because of the efforts of these Commissioners, uh, there's going to be a town hall meeting for dredging the Conawingo Dam with, uh, Maryland Department of Environment and the Army Corps of Engineers and, uh, it's been a long time coming. It is May seventh at six o'clock in Cecil County at the Commissioners Building and, um, lots of thankfulness to go to these Commissioners here. Commissioner Ronnie Fithian from Kent County and Chip McLeod and Bob Melfry from Cecil County. So I just want to thank my colleagues for, uh.
Todd, can you send that out as a, an invite?
I will.
Please?
Yes, sir.
We have all the information.
We'll do. May seventh, yep.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Sorry, didn't mean to.
No, 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 that's all good. So, um, we are attempting to do great things for the Chesapeake Bay to reduce pollution and phosphates and nitrates. That's it.
Jim?
Yes, sir. Well, let's see here. I'm gonna leave the Governor coming with the Lieutenant Governor to this side of the table. Jack, I'm gonna leave the Ace Menory for you and I'm gonna go with, um, Service Awards. We'll start with the Service Awards. Oh, you want that one? Okay, I'll leave it. No, Phil, you can have that one.
Being so diplomatic, I just thought I'd throw that away.
That's okay, that's all good. Uh, Bay Bridge Reconstruction Advisor Group. I could not make the meeting. It's once every three months because I was with Jack doing something. He'll, he'll explain later. But, uh, the Red X signs came up. The, the new signs they put in, has, has anyone here seen them? Because they're not red and they're hidden behind bushes and they're on the outside of four lanes, not in the median where the Red X, the, correct. So anyways, that was brought up and, uh, long story short, that was, you know, the, the best they could do on a quick, short notice, but they're, they're making new signs. They're gonna go overhead on the gantries. Uh, about driving in the Red X line and a ninety, ninety-two dollar fine, I think is what it is. So, but they could go, they could go up to five hundred.
Oh, okay.
But they've never, and it's funny, when I discussed that with some of the MDTA people, they said, you know, we can put the sign up there. It says up to five hundred dollars in fines, but we've never gotten five hundred. And today I was in Montgomery County and I passed underneath one and said the same And today I was in Montgomery County and I passed underneath one and said the same thing, five hundred dollar fine. And I said, wow, he's not kidding about that. So, anyway, so that, that's coming, but unfortunately it's it's gonna take two months to make two signs and put them up, so. And I don't even want to go there on that two-month thing. You know, uh, we can clear a harbor for downbridge in less than a month, but we can't get two frickin' signs up. So anyways.
We can make like, uh, ten, uh, Big Daddy Drive signs.
I'm telling you.
Less than a week.
Less than a week.
Less than a week, we could have one.
We've also got, uh, coming up the next Town Hall, which will be for, this is for the ramp closures. Town Hall is gonna be when? April twenty-third is the Town Hall at, uh...
Asa.
Where? Bayside, Bayside Elementary, thank you.
Same as last year, yeah.
Yeah. So that's coming up and, and the ramp closures start on Sunday, uh, May eighteenth.
Yep, the day after Kent Island Day.
The day after Kent Island Day, but we, okay, so. Alright, um, last Saturday, I got to, uh, an invite from, uh, Fred and some of the vets, uh, in Centerville to go to the National Vietnam Veterans Day event at, uh, Queen Anne High School. And it was, it was awesome. It was, it was a great event. Uh, these are all Vietnam vets. You know, just standing there with, with people that have, you know, were actually getting shot at sometime in their life or in, in support roles or whatever. Uh, I, I think the event was great. I'm hoping next year we can talk them into having some of these vets just get up for five minutes and tell their story. I mean, you just, some of the things you'll hear, the things that stick with people, I, I, I can remember a couple guys who were on an aircraft carrier, um, much older than me, because they were in Vietnam. And the birthing on an aircraft carrier is right, you know, major part of some of the birthing on the old aircraft carriers was close to being underneath the flight deck where the, the catapults were. And, and certain aircraft, you, you, everybody sees the catapult, and I'm gonna digress here, but everyone sees the, the wheel come up and grab on and they hook it on. But in the back, they don't see it like in the old F-4s. There was a bolt that held the, the plane in place and they put pressure on it. And that bolt was, would break at a certain pressure. And the guy said he used to remember, everybody was sleeping in those bunks, it could be daytime, nighttime, they're used to the jet noise, but it's that one little ping!
Yeah.
And when that ping went off, everybody rolled over in their cots. And he said it was, you know, comical, but I just, I mean, anyways, I'm just saying, they got a lot of stories, they got a lot of history and it would be great to, you know, for, for them to get up, four or five of them every year to get up and just tell their little stories, so. You know, it was, it was an awesome event. And, uh, I'm gonna hold right there.
Do you mean to have them come to our Commissioners' Meeting and do that?
No, 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 have them do it at the event in the, in the school where they, you know, I mean, it was, there was a lot of people there. Well, you know, I think it was over a hundred people there for sure, so it was, it was well, uh, a lot, a lot of support for it, so.
Fred does a show with the vets.
Yes.
Asked him to broaden it out to more vets all around the county.
Right.
He had started with some of the, uh, older vets. He was doing a huge repeat, so I'm getting him to go out, so hopefully maybe if you see him, maybe you can say, hey.
Oh, I can, I can definitely do that, yeah.
I've had him on, we'll get a show on, so their families can look at it all the time.
Yeah, because I remember we did a couple for some historical, uh, uh, DC or something. They wanted to, they wanted to get some, uh, videos, comments of veterans and, and it was for some program that they were, they were, uh, logging all this into some federal deal. I don't even know what that was about.
But he's got at least thirty shows already of those, those vets.
Yeah. Good.
Let's, uh, get them all.
Yeah.
Let's get more.
Sure. Yep, very good. That's it, boss.
Phil? So I want to thank Commissioner Jim Moran for deferring, um, really actually the highlight of my month was the opportunity to attend, uh, a recognition luncheon of our county employees. I had the opportunity, uh, because Commissioner President Chris Corcorino was on assignment to, um, to read the opening statements, uh, for this event. And, and so just in a condensed version of, of that day, it was amazing. The county each year recognizes employees who have served five-plus years, um, the citizens of Queen Anne's County and the various departments that we have here. Um, and one of the things that really stood out to me is the folks that were in that room that day, receiving their, their recognition pins and, and appreciation for their service. We had eight hundred and forty years combined service of our employees in Queen Anne's County in that room. So, uh, not that any of them are eight hundred and forty years old, if you're trying to do the math, Patrick.
But they have a social security number.
Eight hundred and forty total years of service to our citizens of Queen Anne's County. So, that, that's always awesome when you can, when you could recognize folks who have given such a commitment over a period of time, uh, to the citizens here in Queen Anne's County and, and I can't even tell you how lucky we are that we have the folks that we have working for us, without a doubt. And then, nearer dear to my heart, this past Saturday, we had Opening Day for Youth Little League Baseball, uh, and Softball here in the county, uh, which is always fun to attend. The kids get dressed up in the uniforms and they parade through Stevensville. And this year we had the Bowie Bay Sox mascot and we had the Orioles mascot. So it was a great day. Uh, the weather held off and it was just exciting to see all these kids ready to put the baseball or the softball in play.
There now.
Yep. That's all I got.
You didn't pull any arrows on anybody, did you?
Huh?
You didn't pull any of your arrows on anybody?
Oh, no, no. No. I actually had to leave there really quick and go do, uh, Queen Anne's County High School.
There you go.
Yep.
Good.
Chad? So I'm gonna leave you the Governor since you met with him.
Okay.
And I will do, I will, uh, finish up on Jim's, uh, the Ace Mentoring Program. We were asked to, didn't really know what we were asked to do until we got there. It was kind of a, it was a surprise to what we were being asked to do, even though we had a phone call to try to, uh, tell us what we were doing. But anyway, um, great program, love to see it come to the shore in our two high schools. But what we did is we went to Anaromon Community College, sat in college chairs for three hours straight, um, and listened to eleven different projects by students from Old Mill High School, Sverna Park High School and Broadneck High School that addressed, um, what could be done with the Jamal's property at the Narrows and ideas of...
Really?
And we had nothing to do with that. This is just, they picked that topic.
This was their, this was their topic, yeah, that they picked and they did. And, uh, some, 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 just some great, uh, just some great ideas. Um, I, I don't know that, I liked any one, but I liked pieces of a lot of them that I think would really fit in that area from, um, you know, the community center going there with a new, um, heritage slash, uh, visitor center. Um, really utilizing the waterfront to its fullest with a boardwalk and, uh, amphitheater, um, just, like I said, just some really out-of-the-box thinking by these kids ranging from ninth grade to seniors in high school. And they had to do a full-blown PowerPoint presentation that, uh, went from materials used to, um, anything, uh, in terms of, yeah, stormwater, energy efficiencies. I mean, it, it really ran a gamut. And they, and they basically had to take it from the architectural through the engineering to how it was gonna be built, the cost, they had to come up with costs. I think one of the projects came in at a hundred and eighty-nine million dollars. Yeah, yeah, that was the city within a city there. What's that? Yeah, exactly. Um, but yeah, no, just really great sitting there, um...
Was Douglas Development there?
No, no, he was not. But, but we do have First Rite of Refusal on any of their ideas. We made sure of that before we started, so we can, um, none, none of it's copyrighted, so we can, we can use anything we saw.
But we were there for more than three hours and Jack forgot to say the heat was broken. It was eighty-five in there.
Oh, yeah, it was crazy.
Smoking.
It was, it was. But, but I will say, I, and I didn't even mention it to Jim afterwards, I thought about the one thing that, and I didn't say it down, because we each got to comment individually. It was four of us judging, um, and we got to comment individually, but I, the one thing they, none of them did is none of them addressed the existing zoning to what they wanted to go to. And they were talking about how the process was gonna take. We had someone saying twelve to fourteen months and permitting is twenty days or whatever, whatever the crazy number they threw out there was, but...
Maybe with our new online service.
Yeah, but, but none of them addressed the existing zoning to kind of put that in their like timeline to say, how long is it gonna take to get the zoning to do what we want to do? Because there's quite a few of them.
It's surprising that not one of them came up with that.
And I didn't even think of, honestly, I sat there through the three hours and I never thought of it until I was driving home and I go, you know, I don't ever remember any of them saying that it's, uh, intense development. Where they're doing a lot of natural nature stuff. I'm like, they can't even do that there, right? So, just that they didn't recognize that. And I, actually, on my notes I sent back, I was like, you know, I forgot this, but this is something you should mention just to them to think about the time that goes into getting something redesigned.
Winning team gets a, a, a scholarship.
Yep.
Some financing for, towards scholarship, uh, in either architectural or engineering.
Yep. So. And all those kids were interested in one of those fields, whether civil, electrical, mechanical, all that stuff. But yeah, really, really cool. Love to see it here. Uh, county high schools take a stab at it though, because, you know, we, we have kids that are in those kind of programs, but, so that's the good, not to the bad.
I'm sorry, your time is up, sir.
I, I just, it's, it's over. Sienna Die was yesterday, obviously. Ding, ding dong, the witch is dead, however you want to say it. I mean, Annapolis is closed for business, hopefully till next year. Wow, I just, all I can say to my, everybody in this county statewide is get ready, everything's gonna cost more. Just short of one point eight billion in, in fee and tax increases to close a budget that, you know, honestly, it's just been let go and probably should have been looked at before now to get to this point. And I'm not putting the blame on any single person or group or anything else, but it's just, we've got to start getting responsible at the state level, because as we know, sitting at this table, where they mess up, eventually we have to fix it at this local level. So, um, that's not gonna, that job's not gonna get any easier as we move forward if those mistakes keep getting made. And, and as Jay alluded to earlier, the, the solar bill, um, I have mixed emotions about it. Uh, we, we were able to squash a lot of the bad that was in it, but there was still some outliers that, you know, and I think, I know he said the five percent cap, but in Queen Anne's County, that's an additional basically here, another four thousand acres over and above what we've already designated, uh, under the pilot program. Um, and if you look at an overhead of a two-hundred-and-fifty acre solar farm and imagine that times twenty-seven.
Huge.
It's a lot of, a lot of land. It's gonna get gobbled up. But, you know, it's just a lot went on over in Annapolis and, and I heard it from several different people who spent a lot of time there and, and longevity-wise, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years they've been over there and said this is the worst session they've seen in their time. And it's, you know, it's sad to hear that coming back over. But it is what it is. Hopefully now everybody can take a breath and we can move forward and, uh, I guess, and you know, a lot of it, I guess, is still what's going on in DC and where that's all gonna land here in the next few weeks, because I know the ninety-day freeze on everything is coming up quick on the twentieth, I believe, so. Um, I guess we'll see where that takes us here in Maryland in terms of the budget. But, yeah, all in all, like I said, and I tell everybody, we're very fortunate here in Queen Anne's County and, and that's to the testament of the people that sit at this desk and have for the last ten, twelve, fifteen years to make sure that we're in good shape going into what, uh...
It's gonna be a challenge.
Bumpy waters are ahead right now. Um, so, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of glad it's done. So. And that's all I got, El Presidente.
Alright, well, I, you know, one of the things that struck me about the solar bill is this idea we're gonna put solar panels everywhere. And, and look, I, I like renewable energies. I think if you want to put solar in your house, I think that's a great idea. They should work to get the cost of those solar panels down. But the idea that we're gonna transform the countryside and the rural areas into these solar panel farms. And what we, we're now dealing with PFAS and, you know, something that probably no one thought about, the pollution from that twenty years ago. We don't know, really, long-term with, if there's no regulations on what the solar panels are manufactured with, with the UV rays and the rain, are we gonna be leaching chemicals from those into, into what is good soil that is then contaminated? And we will say, oh, you're overreacting, it's not... We have done this with every industry in the history of this country. We always do this. We screw things up because we don't study ahead of time. And I'm, I'm worried we might be doing that again. And, you know, we, we see this going back to the days of the tanneries and they would, you know, put the chemicals into the water and then you have clusters of, of, uh, cancer for kids, right? You have, all of these things do happen. And what if, what if that's gonna happen with the solar? Because nobody is even looking at what's the long-term effect when you're changing an environmental landscape like that. Uh, this is not like out in the desert where it's not near anybody and you don't have agricultural land. It's a totally different thing.
We rely on a lot of well water over here.
We really do. And I, so I think the idea of how we are going to protect our soils from a health and safety point of view, and that's like one of the bedrock jobs of government is the health and safety of the people. And if the state's not gonna be taking care of that and looking at that, that's something that I think the counties are gonna have to start looking at.
Yes. To figure out. I think we should locally. I think that's something we need to look at.
Yeah, because I, if they're abandoning, I think they're, they're in such a rush to do good that they're not thinking. I'm sure their intentions are good, but they're not thinking it through. And that's what happens. We get blinded by trying to do good, then we don't think it through.
Not to mention the type A and B soil they're taking.
Right, so, and, and what happens to that?
Which will not be converted back.
I, I think that's a huge problem. Um, okay, so last week, Governor Moore was here with the Lieutenant Governor Miller and the entire Cabinet, uh, Governor's Cabinet. First time, I think, any of us knows of the Governor's Cabinet meeting in Queen Anne's County. Not that we're special, he's doing this in every jurisdiction. One of his pledges was to have a Governor's Cabinet meeting, never in Annapolis and always in one of the other jurisdictions. And so this was Queen Anne's County's chance to host that. They met in Chesapeake College and they toured some local businesses, YMCA, PRS Guitars. And we had opportunity to meet with some of the Cabinet members, Lieutenant Governor. I had the opportunity to talk with the Governor directly for a short period of time. We discussed the issues with the bridge traffic, uh, ramp management that we're doing, um, the blueprint education funding and the state's shortcoming on not giving us enough money, not living up to their blueprint obligations and comparison to what we in Queen Anne's County locally have done, which is significantly ahead of where we should be. Talked about other things like, you know, our efforts to try to connect the trails, um, and the state's assistance to help us do an overpass over Route fifty, so we connect those trails. Um, and also, so we on behalf of Queen Anne's County presented him with one of the Jay Fleming books that has pictures of the Waterman out doing their jobs. And I think this was important because we have seen time again where people in Annapolis like to go out and get their crabs and eat their oysters and they have no idea where it comes from and what it's like to get up before the sun rises and, you know, below zero temperatures and getting on a boat and going out into the bay with those winds blowing, the kind of job that, that the Waterman have. And so, the book presents sort of, you know, a, a nice view of the pictures, but they're all, they're all really nice pictures, right? So they're glossy. It also doesn't show the hardships of the job and what they struggle. And so with that, we invited the Governor to come back sometime, go out on a workboat, uh, see, everything is on it, so they can understand how that, how that works. Um, and to meet with some of the Watermen, and they've agreed to do that, so we're gonna, we're gonna make that happen. Because I think one of the, one of the most important things that, that we can do to help the Watermen here in the county is to be another voice for them and make sure that the folks in Annapolis understand what a very hard job it is that they have and a vital job and a huge piece of Maryland culture.
In those landlocked county jurisdictions that, that aren't watershed counties, making decisions and overregulating the Watermen and, and they have no horse in the race. It's extremely discouraging, uh, but these are hard-working folks.
Yeah.
And, and yet they get out there and they do it every day. And today was a tough day. If they went out today, my hat's off to them, because I'll tell you what, the day was, she was rough today.
So whatever we can do to help them like that.
And just, and just as much as our agricultural community is very generational, so are the Watermen.
Absolutely.
Um, very generational, uh, so.
And we talked about agriculture community, ob, obviously too. It's, the Waterman thing was one of the ones that I wanted to, to highlight, um, because we know how tough Annapolis is. We talk about how crazy, so when sessions in, the Watermen really feel the brunt of that.
Oh, yeah.
As well. And so, want them to know that we're always out there advocating, uh, for them as well.
So when they're out there selling their tickets to their crafties and their fundraisers, buy a ticket and go.
Yeah. Support them and you'll also get some of the best crowds.
I have a basket for the Christmas tree.
Christmas tree basket tree, yeah.
Three baskets. That's grown exponentially over the last few years.
Yep, that's right.
So.
Alright.
And you'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Bingo.